Good afternoon, everyone. It's 2:30. Want to go ahead and get the call the meeting to order. We will start the way we normally do with introductions. It will start with our clerks.
Good afternoon. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon. I am Marissa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Lee Altman, County Commissioner, serving at large, and I also have the privilege as of serving as Vice Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four, also have the privilege of serving as Chair.
My name is Vilma De Leek, and I represent -- let me stand up so you can see me. And my name is Vilma De Leek, and I represent the most powerful district in the county, and that's District Two. And we sure love the free five month, okay? Is that all right?
It's all right.
Why is it quiet over there?
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Arthur Griffin, and I have the pleasure of serving as County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell, representing North Mecklenburg, Huntersville, Davidson Cornelius, and North Charlotte.
Welcome.
Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, and I have the pleasure of serving you at Large.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade County Attorney.
Hey, Reverend Wade.
Tyrone Wade County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Dina D'Orillo County Manager.
We'll hear from the executive team and other staff that's present.
Sure thing. Good afternoon, Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Mike Bryant, Deputy County Manager and incoming County Manager.
Good afternoon, Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, David Collins, County Pledge of Allegiance Director.
Good afternoon, Ebenezer Gudjarapudi, Director of Police.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Reverend Boyd, County CFO.
Good afternoon, George Lane, Capitol Lane, Mecklenburg County Department of Recreation.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica Fronter, Solid Waste Director. Felisa.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Chickerelli, the Director of School and Law Services. Felisa.
Hi, Leslie Rhodes, Air Quality Director for Mecklenburg County.
Nick Walker, Department Director, Mecklenburg County Department of Research.
Here, Deputy Director.
Vicki Savel, Associate Vice President for Facilities and Construction for Symphony Lot Community College.
I'm David Dillard. I'm the Director of Real Estate for Shaw Mecklenburg Library.
David Geezer, Director of Design and Construction, Mecklenburg County, Facility Management.
Mark Hahn, Director of Asset Facility and Land Management County.
Akar Shalaz, I'm the Director of Facilities and Energy and Fleet Management.
Alex Burnett, County Public Information Department.
Cezette Nedrich, Public Information Department.
Kristin Coati, Capital.
Right. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody. Before I turn it over to the manager to tee up our first agenda item, we've got four items on the agenda. One is coming back just -- board members, I just wanted to remind us, one is coming back, and that was our conversation around the CIP. I know a couple of folks did get an opportunity to speak to David, but I hope we'll be able to cruise through that at this point. And so with that being said, I'll turn it over to the manager to tee us up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As part of our budget process, we need to set our rates for our volunteer fire departments for fiscal year '26, so I will ask Ebenezer Gudjarapudi to come to the podium and make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. The recommendation regarding the fire -- volunteer fire district tax rate for FY26. Yeah, the outline of the presentation is similar to the previous years, going to just give you one slide briefing on the funding history, where we were and where we are as of today, and the tax rate calculation, their request, and the only option we are recommending for this upcoming fiscal year. From a history perspective, before the fire districts were established and the first year, each volunteer fire department received about $80,000, flat. From there, given a series of tweaks and recommendations and standardizations, for FY2025, the fiscal year we are in, each volunteer fire department receives $1.25 million. So we've gone from $80,000 up to $1.25 million for each of the departments. Again, Steel Creek operates three, so proportionately they have a higher amount, and West Meck operates two units out of a single station, so their numbers are slightly different. But each of the others operate one station with a crew of four, so it's about $1.25 million. This is the tax rate that has been levied for the ETJ in order to fund -- to generate the required funds to provide for the tax -- for the department's funding. Again, as you see, in FY20, it was the reval year because of which the tax rate went down to 6.67, and over the last five years, it's slightly increased year to year, but now we are at about 8.76 cents this year, which generates required funds to be able to distribute among the volunteer fire districts. For FY25, I put this slide there so that you just see what was the change from FY24 to FY25. We have given them an $875,000 increase last year from the previous year. If you remember, last year, based on the request that came in and the tax rate, the amount they generated, this was the amount that was allocated and approved for each one of them. And especially for Steel Creek, as they were bringing on their third station, we had to increase funding to staff and pay for the capital for the new station. So the last year, the total budget approved for the volunteer fire departments is $12.7 million. I just wanted to highlight that number because I'll come back to it shortly for the estimates for the upcoming fiscal year. That was an $875,000 increase. These are the districts that are served. Carolina, which serves the Pine Mall area, Cooks. Charlotte Rural is a small area that is served by the city of Charlotte because there is no volunteer fire station close by. Huntersville serves the -- another northern area where there is no volunteer fire department, but we contracted Huntersville to service that area. Long Creek, Robinson, Steel Creek has three, and West Mecklenburg, two units out of one station. These are some of the response categories that they track, the different calls that come in and they serve. You see, three of them are routine, and some are, you know, the alarms that they come and they respond to these. I just put it there so you can get an idea of the variety of calls that come into these volunteer fire department stations. This is a map. I know it's very difficult to see. This is a pretty standard map. If any of you want, I can send you an enlarged one of these to see which areas are covered by which volunteer fire department. For FY26, we have some challenges, staffing and response configurations. As you remember, a couple of years ago, we mandated that they need to have four personnel present at all times. That's the state standard, that you have four personnel, and we reimburse them -- we pay them full time for four people at each station 24/7. Voluntary annexations continue to reduce taxable area. I had the city of Charlotte, and they sent me data that says since 2020, 2,400 acres have been annexed into the city of Charlotte. Just in 2024, it is about 398 acres. So the reason I just mentioned that is the taxable area is shrinking, and therefore, eventually, the tax rate will have to -- and the funding will have to kind of compete with that. And the state audit compliance concerns. Currently, our contracts require the -- each volunteer fire department is certified to us that they meet the Office of State Fire Marshal requirements. This past year, one of the stations did not have documentation, so they are put on probation. And if they continue to not meet, then it's going to have insurance impact on the residents in that area. So I just wanted to highlight that because the failure to meet the minimum requirements would change the rating classification. That means all property insurance premium calculations will increase for that area. So it is imperative that we continue to play a close watch on it, and we are going to actually, this coming fiscal year, going to assign a staff person full time to be able to just manage these contracts because we went from less than $1 million to almost $13 million right now. These are the requests that have come in from each of these stations. We've asked them to say, okay, what is your request and a wish list of all the things they want to do? They did indicate that these are not mandatory, but if there was money, this is what they would like to do, which came in about $1.26 million more than last year. Remember, last year, it was $875,000 more we gave them, but the requests came in at about $1.26 higher than last year. The tax rate, if held constant based on the tax values we have, is only going to generate $3.096 million. $13.096, I apologize, at a collection rate of 99. So that's only about $300,000 more than last year in the ETJ, which means we cannot fund $1.266. We only have about $300,000 more. If we did give them all they asked for, the tax rate would have to go up from 8.76 to 9.62. We would have to recommend a tax rate increase just to be able to give them the budgeted request. What we did was, as me and my team reviewed it, and we presented it initially to the county manager and the executive team, is the requirements are going to stay constant, four personnel per station. Now that Steel Creek Station Three is operational, full funding for that, sustain the rate of $20 an hour for the three firefighters and chief at 24. We continue allocation as we gave last year. We gave them a little bit amount of money to be able to offset the medic-related supply expenses because their hours are already paid for. It's just the supplies they need when they respond, and we're going to require in-station presence of four firefighters because part of what has happened is they may not have four onsite. Those two people may be elsewhere, and the state and our fire marshal thinks they have to be onsite in order for a timely response. So like I said, there's only going to be about $300,000 available, as I mentioned before, in order to increase our oversight and conduct more detailed reviews of each station on an ongoing basis. We are recommending taking a vacant code enforcement position and reclassifying it as a Senior Deputy Fire Marshal because until now, we really did not have a person dedicated for that. Fire marshals, as they go about their other business, are just stopping in at random and trying to provide oversight. But with the state now pointing out that one of them did not meet those minimum requirements and put them on probation, we think it is essential that we do a little bit more oversight on these. And then we also have a fire marshal educator that has historically been paid out of general property tax revenue, but it's dedicated to fire education in the ETJ, in the schools, which also is one of the things that will help us reduce the premiums on the fire insurance in those areas. That's been historically funded by property tax, but we think, given the opportunity to be able to now fund it from the fire district tax, which will mean we may need about $55,000 from the fund balance which we have in the volunteer fire district. So our proposal for this upcoming year is to hold everyone constant, no increase from last year to this year, keeping the tax rate constant, and a small increase. If you see here in the rightmost column, you see Long Creek has a proposal with the Berry's Ford Road expansion. They are going to have to do some construction on their property in order to accommodate the fire station and firefighters being there 24/7. As you can imagine, if you want people to be there, they need accommodations and, you know, facilities for them to be onsite 24/7. So Long Creek has requested that, and they are working through a capital loan, which the reimbursement is about $100,000 a year, and the county fire marshal's office, the $200,000, is for what I mentioned before. This is the Senior Deputy Fire Marshal, one position, and $100,000 to fund the educator position that historically has been paid out of the general fund. So you see, the $325,000 is the difference from last year to what we are going to be proposing with the tax rate being the same. We are not recommending a tax rate increase, holding it constant. We have communicated that this to the fire chiefs when we had a call with them, saying the recommendation is going to be flat from one year to the next. With that, any questions?
Thank you, Ebenezer. The way we'll do this, team, is I'm going to start to my right and work to the left. Commissioner Townsend Ingram, I'm going to come to you last because this is your first time seeing anything about -- around this, and so some of the questions, comments may be helpful as we turn to you, okay?
Commissioner, if I may, I missed just one thing to say.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the Mint Hill rate, you see that it's six and a half, going up a half a cent. Again, late last week, the Mint Hill Town Manager has requested that to go up to a seven cent, so it's going to be a one cent increase, what they're requesting because of their new fire station, and based on their math, they were able to do that. So it's about $50,000 more, not significant, but I just wanted to call that out. I didn't have time to modify the slide deck before -- prior to this presentation. So Mint Hill will be going from six to seven. It's not six and a half, as you see on your slide.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll start with Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, then go to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ebenezer, thank you so much for all of this, but the thing I -- I have a couple of things I just don't quite understand.
Sure.
And so I don't get cut off, I will try to spit it out and then let you respond, okay? So it seems like, okay, what you were presenting to us was all in the Charlotte, you were only talking about the Charlotte.
ETJ.
ETJ. So all of the rest of those, you just didn't touch on?
Correct. The rest of those are typically the town managers are the ones that do the calculation and they request a rate, which we pass on to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't vet that in a sense like we do the Charlotte ETJ.
Gotcha. Okay. So on page 11, this part where it says failure to meet the minimum requirements.
Sure.
I don't understand. It sounds like you're telling us about that, but then you're saying we're not changing anything. So help me understand, you know, is page 16 where you're talking about the fire marshal?
Correct.
Is that supposed to be an answer to?
Correct.
I didn't quite.
Yeah, what happens is the Office of State Fire Marshal does random inspections, and they go ahead and check the -- each fire station to make sure they have the appropriate training, that the equipment is up to par, you know, and they have gone through all the processes and their response times are adequate, et cetera, et cetera, according to what the fire code requires. So what had happened is due to changeover in who the chief was and a series of other issues, one of the fire departments did not have any of the documentation in place. So basically, when the state came to review it, they could not prove that their firefighters were trained or the chief had gone to this course, et cetera, et cetera. And with now three plus two, you know, we have about 10 or 11 stations and units that are going to be operational, but we also have the obligation, which we have done randomly, is to do random checks to make sure there's four people at each station to respond. So we wanted to identify an individual dedicated to do that so that they can assist these fire departments, not only in having four, but also have all the paperwork ahead of the state marshal inspection because we don't want to get on the radar of the state marshal as not having met those minimum requirements.
Okay, so we're going to get the Senior Deputy Fire Marshal, who's going to cover all of those Charlotte ETJ stations. And then what about the guy we have now? Is he -- does he do all the other?
Actually, historically, Commissioner, none of the -- they were doing it as an add-on to their existing job.
Oh.
There was no one dedicated to this. This was a special project on their plate. They do annual inspections, they do fire investigations, they also do plan reviews.
Okay.
So their job technically, their job duties did not include any of the volunteer fire stuff, but they were kind of playing the liaison. But I think at -- right at this moment, giving that we are going to be funding about $13 million, we think it's time to have a person dedicated to provide oversight and ensure that all the stations are doing what they need to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really only have one question on page 16. Supplement approximately $55,000 from fund balance in lieu of the tax increase. For years going forward, what would -- what's going to happen with that?
I think with the values, the tax value will go up, Commissioner, and so the rate, even if it sells constant, we had -- this year from last year, we got extra $300,000.
You got what?
$300,000 increase in revenue. So we think, you know, it's a one-time deal. Hopefully, by next year, the increase in tax values and the associated calculation, we'll be able to absorb that.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Leek.
Let me first say thank you for calling, sorry.
It's okay.
For your work and helping us to make sure that we have the correct information. Now, did you say to us, I want to make sure I heard you correctly, that one site did not have information or corrected information?
Yes, Commissioner.
And why was that?
They had a turnover of the chief, Commissioner, and I think the transition from the previous chief to the new one was not a good handover. And so what we had previously relied on is the state certifying that they meet all the state requirements based on the state inspection for us to give them the next year's contract. The previous chiefs all had that information and were able to do that, but this particular team, I think, were unaware. So when the state came to inspect, they could not find a lot of the documentation to validate their certifications, et cetera.
So how did you handle that?
We've -- we are actually working with both the fire -- volunteer fire department and the state. They've given them six months to bring everything into compliance, so our team is working with them to ensure that they go through the checklist to meet all that. And they've already kind of met part of it, but we are confident that by in six months, they'll be able to get there.
So who do we hold accountable?
The chief of that particular department because they have -- the state has given them some time to comply. If it does not, then we will have to take some other action at this point in time.
Will that increase what we have to provide?
No, Commissioner.
No increase?
No increase.
Well, I'm hearing you say this, but what about the community in which is involved with that process?
Yes, Commissioner, we actually have -- they have agreements with the Charlotte Fire Department, and also to meet, just in case they are not available, Charlotte Fire will respond under a mutual aid agreement. But so far, we haven't had any gap in service, so we continue to monitor closely. I think that's kind of why I also was proposing that extra position to do that more regularly so that if any -- there's any gap, we capture it much earlier than having to hear from the state.
So I guess I shouldn't ask any other questions, but the general public holds us accountable.
Yes, Commissioner.
And if they hold us accountable, who do we hold accountable?
Yeah, our fire marshal's office is the one that's going to be constantly now watching over them, and so they've already increased the number of times they're randomly visiting sites, but given their other workload, it's going to be difficult, you know, for consistency purposes. But we will continue to monitor it closely to make sure that there's no more gaps there.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ebenezer, for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions and one observation. On slide seven, you have response categories.
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate at some point in the future to have like calls, like response, the number of calls?
We do have the data, Commissioner. We do have it because I didn't put it because it'll get really busy and then we can get into -- but I can provide you that data if you need it.
That would be good. The other piece, when you talk about the tax rate or tax base in the ETJs, that should pick up. The city planning folk are authorizing developments in the ETJs?
Yes, Commissioner.
And as soon as those things come out of the ground, and with the reval coming up, you should be able to pick up a couple more dollars, I think, but you also have additional responsibilities.
Correct.
To serve that new population. So is there a forecast based on the properties that with -- based on the permitting, which you also do, based on the permitting, is there like a forecast of what the potential revenue might be?
Part of the challenge we have, Commissioner, is while development is ongoing, I -- like I said, just in 2024, 398 acres worth of development has voluntarily annexed into the city.
Yeah.
So as soon as it is completed, we provide service from a volunteer fire department personnel until they are constructed, but once they annex, it's off our tax books, it goes into the city.
There is acreage out there that because of the contiguous requirements for annexation.
Sure.
Is blocked until, I guess, you know, a few years when those folk probably leave.
Yes.
But right now, there are potential develop -- and actual developments that are blocked from being annexed because of the law.
Yes, Commissioner. Again, we have some information, but at this point in time, I don't know if I can really put a number and say this is what is going to be potentially based on a projection right now.
Well, I could tell you my little part of the woods, which you're familiar with.
Yes.
They are -- they're coming up with condominiums and duplexes and stuff, as well as single family out there.
Yeah, I think we are, from a code enforcement perspective, we are averaging close to $14,000 to $15,000 a year units in Mecklenburg County.
Well, I only know Steel Creek. Steel Creek's going to be busy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. So my understanding is in all of the different stations, there was only one noncompliant.
Correct, Commissioner.
And the new Senior Deputy Fire Marshal is going to oversee all of the nine stations and the two areas that you mentioned?
Yes, Commissioner.
That's their full-time job?
Yes, Commissioner.
On the fire marshal educator?
Yes.
Where are they going to educate since ETJ is so small?
No, actually, as part of the MOU with the city, Charlotte Fire Department, Commissioner, they already do, but it's just paying out of -- it's been paid out of the property tax revenue where they go into the third and fifth and I think the seventh graders, and they do fire education in schools, but they are dedicated to the schools in the ETJ.
Okay.
So that helps because part of overall ISO for the fire departments is that we are providing education to schools, you know, as well as other outreach events, and so that's -- the ETJ portion has been kind of pawned up to the fire marshal's office, which they've been doing historically.
Thank you. And tell me where in this cost analysis that the medic-related supply expenses go? Like, where is that coming from?
What we did last year, Commissioner, was from a personnel hourly rate standpoint, we are already compensating each volunteer fire department for 24/7 for four people. So their salary costs are taken care of, and based on historical reimbursements from medic to the volunteer fire departments, it was only about $25,000 that they were receiving as part of reimbursements when they provided that service historically because it was $1,000 a month, and it was like $25, $30 a call. So last year, we programmed it as part of it, and each station got about $40,000, more than the 25 to 30 they were getting from medic previously. So we think that's more than sufficient to pay for the supplies because they're ours and the other costs are already taken care of as part of their operational budget because we pay them for fuel, we pay them for hours, and all other things are taken care of. It's just the medical supplies that may be needed when they arrive onsite, and that was part of the $100,000 we gave them extra last year for both capital and supplies.
Thank you. In addition to public safety, it is -- it's so important. I think Commissioner Griffin and I live in ETJ, and if one of the fire stations fails, either we won't be able to get house insurance or it'll be really expensive.
Correct.
And, well, regardless, you want somebody to respond if you're having something wrong, but thank you for this.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also thank you for the presentation. And since I am in the [inaudible], I only had like two questions. Most of them have been answered, but explain to me just briefly, if you can explain briefly, what the tax rate is based on because I'm -- you -- I thought it was just on property values that the county sets, the tax rate, but if one of the Mint Hill is asking, I think it was Mint Hill, yeah, Mint Hill is asking for a half percent increase, then it would indicate that something else is driving what and how we set the rate for the taxes. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. The Charlotte tax rate, each of these towns have an ETJ. The reason you don't see Matthews is Matthews doesn't have an ETJ.
Okay.
So that rate is only going to be charged for the residents in their ETJ for the towns to provide the fire service to them. So each town's finance model is different for how they provide the service. So Mint Hill is going to go from six to seven because they recently built a new fire station, and their cost for providing service to their ETJ residents has gone up. But the Charlotte rate you see is the rate that is going to be charged to all the residents in the Charlotte ETJ only.
Okay.
Yeah. And what -- remind me, what is the reason for the dramatic fluctuation between '22, '23, and '24, that 10.15? That's because in '23, we did adjust their hourly rates, Commissioner, because at that time, it was, you know, we went from $15 an hour to $18 an hour, we went from 20 and 24. So that per hour increase that we gave them and standardizing, we also went from two full-time to three full-time to four full-time. So as we kind of stepped that up, standardized over the years, the rate had to fluctuate a little bit to absorb that cost, but right now, they are at four full-time, 24/7. We pay them $20 and $24 an hour for the firefighter and the chiefs.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. So just for me to take a step back.
Sure.
You know, we only run or responsible for the provision of fire services in the ETJ, which is 7% of the county, which is how many stations?
We have eight, nine, I think 10 or 11, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't know. Here, we have one, two, three, four, nine stations so far.
So why does it say Charlotte District VFD? Shouldn't it say ETJ?
Yeah.
Because that's super confusing.
Sure, I'll change that slide, that's not a problem.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It's only the ETJ, yeah.
And, and it seems like, maybe it's just like a relic of nomenclature, but it seems like it shouldn't be called volunteer fire departments.
Anymore, yes.
If we're paying them a million dollars each and people are getting 20 dollars an hour because it just confuses already something that's fairly complicated?
Correct. Yes, Commissioner, like I said, it's only like last couple of years, we went four full-time.
Gotcha.
They kind of transitioned. It was fully volunteer in 2012, 2013, $80,000 and nothing more. And then we went to funding two people for a period of time, then we went to three and now it's four. But they are all 501(c)(3)'s that are registered and they're kind of the VFD nomenclature stuck.
Okay. So slide 12 says Charlotte District at the top, but it's talking about Huntersville. And I'm just confused. Is there a Huntersville?
I can, I can
Go ahead.
answer that. For example, if you have, you know, all these Hendrick's dealerships up north, there is a certain portion of that area, including the dealerships, that are actually in the Charlotte ETJ, but right adjacent to Huntersville. There is no volunteer fire department there that can provide service to that area. So in that area, we contract with CFD. So we give money to Charlotte Fire to service that area.
To serve essentially Huntersville.
Huntersville. No, no, there is an area south, just north of 485 where the automotive dealerships are. They are not in the town of Huntersville, they are in the city of Charlotte ETJ. But because there is no volunteer fire department able to service there and Charlotte Fire has a station close by, we contract with Charlotte Fire to cover that area for us, just like we do with other VFDs.
Okay. And did all of the municipalities collaborate with you and they are all consenting to these tax increases the way they are laid out here?
Actually, the rates have been requested by the town managers.
Okay. So we are really just passing through what they want for themselves?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, you got it. Madam Manager, I just need a point of clarification off of what the vice chair just said. So she was saying essentially this is a pass-through, but I thought we baked, somehow we baked this into your overall recommendations on tax rate. And so I want to
Right, well, we present, when I present my budget, I also present in there the respective tax rates for the fire protection service districts, similar to the law enforcement service districts. So that's part of my overall budget, but it's a separate tax and a separate fund.
Okay, understood, thank you. Ebony, so thank you. So there's no action, this is really visibility and just feedback from the board on this?
The takeaway is the tax rate is going to be the same.
Yeah.
Our recommendation.
This does not change, Commissioner Lee, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager, you want to tee us up?
Sure. The next item on our agenda today is another presentation by our illustrious CFO, David Boyd. The last time he was here, he made a pretty full presentation. There were a lot of questions. And so you were asked to follow back up with him and meet with him if you so desired. I believe Commissioner Altman and Commissioner Powell have both met with Mr. Boyd to get clarification. So David is going to come back and sort of go through the funding strategy again so that we can try to get through that and then also take any additional questions that you may have. So we're not going to talk a lot about projects today because we felt like the confusion was more around funding and how the funding worked and not so much about the respective projects. That was our takeaway.
I think, I think that's right.
But if that's not correct, then we can certainly come back and talk about projects.
I think that was right. We had an extensive list of all the projects and costs, and so I think you're spot on.
Right, and good afternoon, David Boyd, CFO. To that point, Mr. Chairman, you do have, I gave you that handout again that shows you all of the projects that are recommended, as well as the projects that are already included in the five-year plan as a handout this afternoon. It's the same, the same handout that you received a couple of weeks ago. All right. So as we talked about last time, a major component of the CIP process each year is to update our funding model, which drives the capacity that we'll have to fund new projects. And much of that updating has to do with what happened in the prior year. So as I mentioned before, we went through and looked at what happened in fiscal year '24 for spending on projects compared to what we had projected to happen. And there was quite a bit less spending in '24 than was previously projected. As part of the process, then, we talked with all of the partner agencies that are actually managing the projects and asked them to then update what are their future projections for spending on these projects? So considering you did not spend as much as you had planned to in '24, what does that mean for the future? Obviously, if you didn't finish as much as you were intending to do in '24, you're going to have to do it in '25. Some of the stuff you were planning on doing in '25 is going to push to '26. So there's a bit of a domino effect that that happens. So not only was '24 spending lower than we had planned, most of the other spending shifted out as well, specifically for projects that were expected to start in '25 and to a certain extent, '26. The later ones, not as, not as much. The other thing that that impacted was earlier this fiscal year, we had planned to borrow money to fund what we expected to be spent in fiscal year '25. Those cash flow updates, the actual results from '24 allowed us to borrow less money now than we had projected. So last year, when we set this plan and maximized the capacity for spending, we had assumed we were going to borrow $400 million for non-school projects. And just to clarify, most of what we're talking about today is to do with non-school projects and non-school funding. So we borrowed only, we only needed to borrow 250 million. So we reduced our borrowing by $150 million. And we achieved a slightly lower interest rate than what we had projected. So both of those things mean that the future debt service that we had expected to pay is now less than what was forecast. We also try to make our model as accurate as possible and that includes making sure that all of the assumptions that we have in there make the most sense, that they are reasonably conservative, but not overly conservative. We also take a look at the functionality, make sure everything's working right, revenue assumptions, other things, and just how this overall model works. And that resulted in a little additional capacity being added to the model as well. So overall, we update all of the numbers about what happened at '24, what's expected to happen going forward. And that increased the amount of capacity that we were able to pay for additional capital projects over this five-year period that we're now talking about. So we're talking about the period from fiscal year '26 to fiscal year '30. That's the new five-year rolling CIP period. So the first thing that we did with that capacity, after our conversation about, at the retreat, about land acquisition and the obvious need for us to continue to fund land acquisition, was make sure that we have $30 million of funding in the CIP to pay for land acquisition for each of the next five years. So in the plan previously, we had some money for land acquisition in '26, '27, and '28. Those seem to be kind of oddly specific numbers. But back when we first started this process, we had put $10 million inflated into the plan previously. And it was funded out through 2028. And so we needed to increase funding to get to 30 for those three years. And then the plan did not have any additional money for land acquisition after 2028. So we added 30 million in each of '29 and '2030. This does not reflect the $50 million of land acquisition money that we had allocated in '25 or in '24. This is just prospectively what was the new money that we were going to use for land acquisition. Much of the land acquisition money that we, that we, that we had in prior years came from fund balance. But as we talked about at the retreat, you know, we talked about options on how to pay for land, our recommendation was putting it into the CIP so we could evaluate the impact of that spending along with all of our other capital needs. Made the most sense so we could see all of our costs in one place and be able to kind of split the funding between cash and/or borrowed money if necessary without having to do a standalone land acquisition bond, which has all types of other complexities that go along with it. This was the strategy that made the most sense and what we're recommending for land acquisition. So we updated the financial model, saw that there was more capacity to be able to do things. We then added this land acquisition money to the plan to the tune of $113 million over the next five years. And then we said, all right, what are the new projects that people are requesting? And going into this, once we, once we did what I said before, capacity minus the land, we saw that we had about $200 to $225 million worth of capacity left. And we received 47 project requests that totaled $323 million. So we had to get the $323 million number down to something in that $200 to $225 million range. And you can see the range of projects that were requested. I'll point out again that the ELAP projects here, that's new for this fiscal year. Previously, we considered those separately, but we've folded the ELAP funding into the CIP because much of that, much of the activity around the Environmental Leadership Action Plan is now more of a capital nature. And as with the land, we need to consider it along with all the rest of our capital costs. And because this was new, we recommended that they submit projects that begin in '26 and run through fiscal year '30, whereas most of the other projects that were submitted, we were talking about having them be applicable for that new fifth year for fiscal year '30. So that's why there's a lot more individual ELAP requests. And then, once we went through various iterations of evaluation of those projects, including input from the CCBA C, whom you heard from at our last meeting, we ended up recommending $215 million of projects, 38 in total. And you can see the outline there. So we did land within that $200 to $225 million range with $215 million worth of new projects, coupled with the $113 million in land acquisition money that's now in the CIP. That gives us a total add to our five-year rolling CIP of just under $330 million, is what we're recommending. As I said before, this is separate and distinct from CMS. I think I provided you a slide last time that showed their projects that are all on track right now and are all being funded from the $2.5 billion of bonds that will be issued in the future. We have also set aside funding in the future. So we can't just spend every penny that we have between now and 2030. We need to make sure that we're reserving capacity in 2031, '32, and '33 for both CMS and for non-school projects. And so we have built the model to make sure that we still have capacity for around $150 million of school projects and $150 million of non-school projects in 2031. This time next year, we'll be back to you going through this same process. We updated last year, updated projections, looked at what new assumptions are. And it will likely be the case that that $150 million in capacity number that we're talking about in 2031 will be something other than that. Because things are going to change and we're talking about six years in the future. But we're building the model and the projections to give us our best opportunity to make sure that capacity is reserved. So the other thing that is affecting our capacity is how much money we could borrow. I mean, if we could borrow for all of this stuff, we could build a whole bunch of things, but we'd eventually have to pay for it. And we don't want to, you know, max out our credit card and then go get another credit card. So we have some constraints built into our debt policy that we want to make sure we stay close to or at least aware of when we reach those, some of those limits. So that top-left one is kind of the affordability piece. How much of our total spending is associated with debt service? And we want to keep that number less than 17% to the extent possible. And you can see when we get out there to the 2031, 2032 range, we're starting to get close to that. But we have some time before we get there. And as I said before, we're trying to keep reasonably conservative projections in here in terms of how much we borrow, when we borrow it, what the interest rate is. So that is not of concern right now, other than the fact to say, hey, we've kind of maxed things out and we're going to have to pay attention to that as we get closer. The bottom right, the other two metrics there are just informational for you, but I wanted to highlight the bottom-right one. That is where we're seeing the largest change, in my opinion. Like, right now, we have less than $2 billion in total outstanding debt. And if we execute on this plan as it's, as it's laid out right now, we'll get up there around $3.6-ish billion of debt once we get out to 2032, before it levels off and starts coming back down. If we look at that total debt a little bit differently, you can kind of see our, that outstanding debt, that's the same chart there on the left, except I've broken it into what's our current debt and what's the new debt that we're going to be issuing. So our current debt is the blue and you can see where it's at right now. And over time, as we pay that off, most of the debt we have outstanding is 20-year amortization and we pay a level principal amount on that each year. You can see that goes down. But as that debt pays off, that gives us the capacity to issue some more. But you can see the rate at which we're issuing new debt is exceeding the rate at which our existing debt is being paid off. And so that's why the total starts to grow with the orange showing you the new debt that we're intending to issue. And then you can see the same thing on the right side, that's our annual debt payments. So our payments go down over time. And then as we add more debt, we've got new payments that add to it. So right now, we're paying, next year, we're projected to pay about $250 million in total debt payments. And by the time we get out to 2035, that's going to be over $450 million, based on our current projections. The other question that came up when we talked last time was the plan that we've built right now has already got baked into it future tax increases that we talked about when we first started down this road of the five-year CIP and the future bonds that we'd be issuing for CMS. There's two cents that we would need in '28 and another cent we would need in '29 for the plan to work. We've kept that assumption in there because if those tax increases go away, that's going to lower our capacity. And Commissioner Dunlop specifically asked, what would happen? What would we need to do for the plan to work if we did not have that tax increase, say, in fiscal year '29? If we didn't do that, what would need to happen? So that takes, well, right now, a penny is worth about $30 million. By the time you get out to 2029, it'll be worth something more than that. And so that money would be gone, not only in 2029, but in every year going forward. That 30 million plus wouldn't be there. So if I put that into this financial model, it tells me what kind of hole exists in each of those years going forward. And what it told me was between now and 2035, we'd have to take $175 million worth of projects out of the plan. If you break that down by year, between now and 2031, we would have to take $60 million out of the plan, anytime between now and 2031. And then by the time you get to 2033, you need to take another 50 million out. By the time you got to 2034, another 40. And by the time you get to 2035, another 25 million. And then thereafter, our annual capacity for new projects would be, wouldn't be $150 million a year. It would be closer to $110, $115 million a year. So it doesn't seem like a lot to just take one cent out of here, but it adds up over time. And that's what, that's what that impact of that, of just taking that one cent out in 2029. If we took one cent out in 2028, we would just have to back up a bit, and the numbers would be slightly different. The rest of what I've got included here is more project-specific and what we talked about last time, just showing you for each section which projects are recommended for being funded, which ones that we had to cut out or delay to 2031 to fit within the capacity that we projected. Here's Asset and Facilities Management. We kicked out Parking Deck, Central Piedmont, the EV Technology Program Expansion, Mecklenburg Library, the Mint Hill renovation, Park and Recreation, the McAlpine Creek Greenway. And then, ELAP, we had a larger conversation about how they went back and reevaluated their projects based on other things that were going on at other projects and/or kind of the payback relative to the cost of some of these improvements. And they took their 32 projects, reduced it down to 26, and took $91 million worth of requests, and were able to reduce that to $61 million. And they came in three buckets. We had deep energy retrofits, which is changes to the components of buildings that need them replaced. We had EV chargers, and then we had onsite solar projects. So, again, my intent today was to try to clear up some of the questions that we heard last time. We may allow you all to ask any other questions you might have, get any feedback from you on any changes you might want to see in the five-year plan so that when we bring it back to you, there's no surprises and it includes what you're looking for. And then, the five-year CIP will be adopted along with the budget as well as a large capital project ordinance, which would actually appropriate money for all of the projects that are ongoing and slated to start in fiscal year '26. So, you'd have two actions related to the CIP that would go along with the budget on June 3rd. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any other questions you all might have.
David, thank you for the presentation. Before I take questions from the board members, just let me know who has questions, please. But, you know, one of the things that I, the reason why this came back is because previously, I didn't feel like staff received the feedback that was needed to be able to react, number one. And so, I appreciate it coming back. And then, also, with respect to the opportunity to make changes, I didn't get a sense from the board that there were any suggestions there either. So, now that we have more clarification, more clarity, and I thought this presentation was fantastic, I'll open it up and ask people to please provide the feedback that's being requested. If you're expecting or requesting changes, please state that. And if not, I guess staff will just have to assume that we're ready to move forward. So, I'll start with Commissioner Altman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Boyd. You know, I'm imagining a constituent watching this and hearing us toss around numbers like $300 million, and we're going to, you know, shrink a $91 million bucket down to $61 million. And I assume the conversation's going to go pretty fast, and they're going to be like, "Wow, that's a whole lot of money, and do they really understand?" And so, I want the public listening to know that there are a lot of things that elected officials need to do, but one of them is to, to the best of my ability, as a layperson with no expertise in any of this, to try to be a watchdog on the non-elected people who are driving a $2.5 billion budget. And so, I just want to relate to the community that I did spend an hour with Mr. Boyd and brought to bear the hardest questions that I could muster to try to make sure it all makes sense and checks out to the best of my ability. And it really did. And I appreciate you allowing me to push and push and ask and ask because this is very complicated, but it does, it does all check out from my evaluation of everything you had to say. In terms of the feedback that the chairman's seeking, I understand that all the recommended cuts to bring down our CIP to the amount of money that we can borrow and stay within the limits, all the things that have been recommended to be cut back have been, you know, vetted through the process, and I have heard no community outcry about any one of them. And I'm not aware of any reason why these prioritizations are not good. So, I do support them. And the only clarification I would like to ask is it just so happens that I got a question today from a resident that I don't know how to answer, and this is, I think, the right conversation to bring it up. She says, "Please keep Nations Ford Community Center in the budget." And to my knowledge, it's, is it in this CIP as it currently exists?
Let me, let me go, it's either on the list that you have in front of you, I don't have it on the tip of my tongue, or it's previously approved.
You want to go?
Do you know?
Yeah. Just because I do want to be able to share this with the residents, so let's try to get it where they can hear.
Yeah, there is no, there is no Recreation Center or Community Center that's a part of our FY '30 budget asking this.
For Nations Ford? And is that because at the time the last CIP was voted upon, it was a smaller population?
No, it just wasn't one of the projects that we were looking for right now.
So, yeah, I'd like to understand the rank.
They may be talking about the Community Resource Center.
That's exactly what I was going to say. It's very likely this person was talking about the Community Resource Center.
Correct.
The CRC, which was in FY '24 to '28 budget, is already in the CIP, was already approved.
So, what is the status of that?
The Southwest CRC.
Sorry. So, what's the sta?
Martin?
What's the status of the CRC?
The status of the CRC?
Okay. It follows the East CRC in terms of the design and construction process, so it's still probably a year or so out before it starts design.
Oh, okay. So, it's still in the budget and still in the plan?
2028 is when that, you're talking about the Southwest.
I see the county manager nodding yes. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
2028 is when that's funded.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Let's go with Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Is it my turn?
Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. So, thank you for your expertise in this rolling CIP. A couple of things. Happy Earth Day. On Earth Day, I think it's important to recognize the commitment to land acquisition on the CIP because it shows our commitment to trying to have smart growth. And it was, it was kind of worrisome to depend on fund balance for land acquisition. So, it was nice when it finally got put into the CIP, and it's nice to see it at a higher level. And so, even though it's tiny, it's big because it shows our commitment to protecting natural resources. I think it's important to have it dedicated to environmental leadership and to have the categories like reflect more detail. And so, when we're looking at the deep energy retrofit category that gets put in the ELAP, there's a significant, it's like 36 million of that would be maintenance that we would do anyway. So, it's not really ELAP, it's maintenance, and 25 million would be ELAP. And so, I just think it's important to have more detail and be clear in our direction on what we're doing. I really appreciate Vice Chair Altman's questions about the solar and the EV and all of that because the top priority, the thing that's the most urgent, is the land acquisition. But the other things are important based on community input, air quality, things like that. So, it's, it's a marriage of all the things that the community has told us are important. But I just want the detail that I've reflected, and I appreciate your time today, David. And I think, I think that's everything for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, David, for your presentation. First of all, I like the rolling CIP concept. You certainly can't hold future boards to that, but it gives you a perspective and give the citizens a perspective about what's anticipated in terms of capital expenses for the county. So, I like the rolling CIP. The second piece is on the documents that you provided to us. For fiscal year '31, you front-loaded about $75 million worth of projects. So, if it's, the rolling CIP is five years. Are we reducing the annual spend for FY '31?
So, the amounts that you see there for '31 are the projects that were requested this year that we pushed to '31. So, we're just showing you that they weren't unfunded, that they're pushed to '31. And if we do that, that will eat into that $150 million that's out there.
But when we have the conversation next year, we can revisit those projects versus other things that are occurring.
Absolutely.
Or may want to occur. The next piece is, and I just want to put this on the table because the rolling CIP is sort of like a verbal commitment, but no real hard commitment because each board is different to things. When you talk about Nations Ford, like the, and the manager even said this, the regional rec centers are expensive items, et cetera, but that is a concern for Southwest Mecklenburg County as well as a regional library. And those are big-ticket items, and we just have to have the fortitude as a board to have commitment to make sure capital projects has some degree of equity to them. And the final project, managing, correct me if I'm wrong, was to redo the Health Department on Beatty's Ford Road and convert that to a larger CRC, although it's not in this plan, but we've talked about it. So, keep those kinds of things in mind as you go through this process. Five years is a long way, but there are certain commitments that you are committing a certain degree of equity to the entire county. So, another CRC will go to the Beatty's Ford roadside at some point to replace the Rosa Park Health Department that's right there on 85 and Beatty's Ford. And so, we'll have big debates about the regional rec centers, but I think regional rec centers are amenities that, that, just like your greenways and your walking trails, et cetera, those are important. So, just keep that in mind. But thanks to our commitment for the rolling CIP, it's a good concept. We just have to make sure that the public is engaged and people see these conversations so that when you have this conversation next year, we'll be able to continue the dialogue about equity because building buildings aren't going to get cheaper, they're going to get more expensive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, David. I appreciate the presentation also. I thought it cleared up a lot of stuff for me as well, as well as the phone call from Commissioner Altman. She kind of helped me understand some things. So, the only questions I really have, one, if we have additional questions, because I got like three text calls, emails about the Nations Ford CRC, if we have additional questions, who do we direct that to specifically? And as well, how sensitive, if these, these capital projects, how sensitive are the projections to these current tariffs and swings in the economy? Are they sensitive to those? Are we like, can we just say, "Oh, we'll have to throw these projections out of the window if some other anomaly happens," or?
So, if you have questions, you can, you can send them to me, and if I don't know the answer, I'll get you connected with the right person. The tariffs are of concern, it's just we don't know what to do with it right now. So, what I, what I said last time, I will continue to say now, is we're not doing anything significantly different right now, but as we get bids in for, for projects as we go along, as we, you know, hear from Mark and his staff and others as they're doing projects, and we are starting to see or we're expecting to see cost increases, then the other thing that happens with the five-year rolling CIP is we're going to be back saying, "Hey, everything costs a lot more." And now, we've got to, instead of add, we're going to have to subtract because everything's costing more than what we currently are projecting. So, there is a sensitivity there. We just don't know the extent to which it's going to manifest itself.
And that is a concern because of what Commissioner Griffin said about equity and making sure that we fulfill those promises that are kind of verbal. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say thank you. I did watch last week's meeting over again, and it was, it made more sense. And so, I didn't have to actually have a one-on-one with you because really answered my questions. So, I appreciate that. I do want to also underline that we should be saying, for the land acquisition, we ought to be specifying that it's for ELAP. You know, I think our, our documents ought to spell it out so that there's no confusion what the land acquisition is for. And then, I also wanted to say that I did get those phone calls and texts today, emails about Nations Ford, and I think there could be some misinformation out there that we do have the CRC that was already in the CIP. We're not voting on that as a new item, but also, the Nations Ford Community Library is also a part of the CIP from previous years. So, that's for FY '27 and FY '28. So, just want to make sure that people are hearing loud and clear that those items are in there. And having said that, I also wanted to, you know, talk about, a little bit about the regional rec center for that area. You know, MECC playbook is coming up, and I know that's when those kinds of regional rec centers or, you know, you talked last time, met a manager, about community centers, parks, and all of those things, and how you were emphasizing those as opposed to another regional rec center. So, the time for that conversation will be around MECC playbook. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, last but not least, on page 16, I just wondered if you could, this jumped out to me that we have the Detention Center North solar panel project on there. And isn't Detention Center North, isn't that the juvenile detention center that we don't use?
Essentially, it's vacant right now, but we do still use it for food service. So, all the food service for jail central actually comes out of Jail North.
Okay.
It's not fully closed, we're not housing any inmates or any guests there, but it's still being used for some things.
Uh-huh. So, I'm just, I mean, questioning the $4 million then, just for food service? Like, does that make sense?
I'm going to ask Mark Khan if you can respond to that, please. Thank you.
Thank you for giving them a microphone this time, whoever set up the room. Appreciate that.
So, even though a facility may not be in operational use, the HVAC systems and the electric and all that still are operating to keep the building, you know, from going bad and getting mold, that kind of thing. So, anything you can do to drop the energy usage or do it with non-carbon sources is still going to be advantageous from a net carbon neutrality standpoint.
Okay. So, that's what we need in order to keep the building maintained. It's more of a maintenance, not like an upgrade.
It's a, it's a, it's going from carbon-sourced energy to non-carbon-sourced energy by putting solar panels in. The only time I would suggest not doing that is if you're for sure you're going to get rid of it in two years or three years.
Like, demolish the building at some point.
Yeah.
Okay. Because there was a communication from the sheriff recently around talking about the Detention Center, Juvenile Detention Center. Is there anything that, you know, we should know about that? It's just, I'm tying these together because they both came out around the same time.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. At this point in time, as far as I know, there has been no additional conversations with Sheriff McFadden to reopen the Juvenile Detention Center. He was involved in some initial discussions and said he was not in a position to move forward and did not engage in any additional conversations about that. There is no money in his budget for that. He has not asked for any money to reopen the Juvenile Detention Center. So, at this point, I would say there's, there's nothing happening there.
Okay. But this investment could support that if that did come back to that space?
Yes, you'd be using solar power as opposed to other sources.
Gosh. All right, I got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for coming back and for your emails and your patience with us. The only thing I want to say is basically to the general public and whoever might be listening, when they hear tax increase, nobody wants to hear that. Nobody upon nobody wants to hear that. But I don't think there's a single department listed in the CIP that would be able to cut $175 million from our CIP. You know, we, this is, this has been out there, people know that it's going to happen, and it's necessary. We've got to keep up. Our buildings have to- We've got to keep up, our buildings have to keep up. But this includes parks and greenways and green space and, and so on and so on. And I mean, I, we haven't discussed it. I'm glad it was asked so that we can see this in numbers. So thank you, and I hope the, I hope the public sees us in numbers too. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Let me first say thank you for your information to us. I wish we could have gotten this earlier to peruse it so that we could know what we're going to ask. And that's from my perspective. If I'm in, if I'm not right, let me know. When I looked at the information that deals with the detention center, the Betty Ray Fleet Center and others, Valerie Woodard Center, are we saying that we going to be able to improve what we already have at those sites? Are we waiting for the general public to say to us what we need to do?
These projects are to put solar panels on the roofs of those buildings to defray the energy costs and to switch from a...
Solar panels?
That's right.
Are they efficient?
They're more efficient than the energy that's being generated now.
They're more efficient than the...
They, they will save us money on, on our current energy source.
Well, my question is, are we going to be warm? Are we going to be cold?
There, there won't be any impact on the operation of the buildings.
That, to me, would project whether we will be making sure that we are meeting the needs of the staffs, if it's going to be warm or cold, or we just doing it to do it to save money.
Just, I'll let, I'll let Mark talk to you about solar panels.
I'm not sold on those panels.
Right.
So this simply goes to the implementation of the environmental leadership policy and the action plan that followed that, and the goal to try to reach net carbon zero by 2035. Putting solar panels on the building does not make it more or less comfortable, it simply changes the energy from what could be called dirty energy, if it comes from a carbon-based source like coal-powered plants, and instead it's coming from the sun, which is clean energy and non-carbon. That's the impetus for this entire set of plans for deep energy retrofrit, solar, and then there's other added benefits as well in terms of emissions for EVs and that kind of thing. But that's the main, the main point of solar is trying to get non-carbon sources. Hope that answers your question.
I'm not sure it answers my question or not, but thank you so much. My other concern is Camp Green Park, parks within the confines of districts.
You need to finish your question, Commissioner Lee.
I'm sorry.
Finish, finish your question, please.
As relates to Allegheny to Freedom Drive and West Boulevard, help me understand these, this information.
What, what's the scope of the projects that are happening there?
Yes.
I'll let Bert describe that for you.
Bert, who is Bert?
Bert.
Bert Lynn, sorry. Yeah, so for Camp Green Park, we will be doing a renovation of the existing facilities of the park and then expanding the park. We don't have activation throughout the, the whole property that we own. So we would be not only improving what's there, but adding to what's there.
When you say adding, will that be for senior citizens too?
Yes.
Or just for children?
So the amenities that we would add would be based on public engagement with the, the neighbors that live in the community directly around the park there.
And I want to say thank you for your response because I have not been able to serve because the former chairman did not utilize myself or Pat Coffin at all this past year, serving to determine who would be a part of that process. So I feel that I was not afforded the opportunity to represent my people from that perspective. That's not your fault, it's fault of the leadership. Yes, I said, and then I will say it again, it's a fact.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Before I get into my questions, I know that Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell had some more questions. Did you have more questions? I want you to be able to...
No, absolutely not.
You're okay? Okay. Fantastic. Everybody else okay? Good. So a couple of things that I, I just want to point out as we go through this, and I appreciate Commissioner Griffin bringing up the, the equity lens because that's something that's really important to this board. You know, the, the interesting thing, though, is that when you take the amount of need that we have in the community, it just doesn't fit nice and neat into a, into a, a box. So I want to take the opportunity to say thank you to staff because I can imagine how painstaking it is to try to figure out what Commissioner X is going to say, what Commissioner Y is going to say, what the board is going to say when you have a slew of need. But then you have the financial component that you have to fit into a box, being forward-thinking, thinking about tax rate, thinking about debt capacity, thinking about all of the financial constraints that we're under as well. And I think sometimes in the, in the public's eyes, in, in our eyes as well, we, we talk about a regional rec center, or we talk about all these big-ticket items that are really nice to have. And it falls on us to make the, those decisions to say, okay, as opposed to the library or these libraries, we want the rec center, right? Because it's, it's just the math piece. And it's not that, it's not that easy as we're, as we're going through that. So I really just want to say thank you to, to staff because I do, when I look at where we are, I feel like there is an equity lens that has been applied. I also, not only, I not only get that, but I also get the fact that you're incorporating the board's priorities. When we think about ELAP, it's baked in. And so I, I think as we're asking these questions, it's just really important for us to acknowledge the work of our team members and, you know, how they go through this process. And I do think moving to the rolling CIP was, was certainly something that's beneficial for the community. And, and David, I just think the presentation was great. I have one question, with all that being said, I do have a question if you go to page 14 for me, slide 14, excuse me. It was, with respect to the Aquatic Center, now I've heard like a lot of talk about the need for a new or different facility. And I guess, you know, we're, you know, when we, when we talk about $18 million in, in our existing facility, and I've heard, and I think Commissioner Meyer as well has heard this, about the need for some sort of new facility. In, I'm, I'm just, I guess I have a little question mark about investing $18 million if, if we need, excuse me, we need to be more forward-looking around a, a different facility. So I, I don't know if that came up in any of the conversations, but I'm just curious.
You mean building a new one as opposed to upping this one?
Yeah, like the need for, a need for a, a new one as opposed to 18 million in...
Well, I mean, I can let Bert answer this as well, but I mean, I think since I've been here, I think it's, we need additional water, not getting rid of this water. So even if we don't do this, I think people want additional pools. So I'll stop there and let the experts...
Yeah, the Aquatic Center as it exists today was updated seven years ago or so. The conversations that we've had with stakeholders and community members has been around expanding that facility, not necessarily replacing it. And so adding a second tank for additional competition in, in daily use.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that. I think that's all the, the questions. I believe you got your, your feedback, and it looks like we're ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the next item under our, on our agenda today is our proposed fee adjustments. Again, this is something that comes to you as part of the budget. We've got three departments who are going to present to you today, Park and Recreation, Land Use and Environmental Services, and Public Health. And so we're going to start with Nick Walker and Peter Cook, who are going to present the Park and Rec proposed fee adjustments.
And just so everybody's on the same page, we're going to go through all of the presentations. We're going to let everybody do their presentations, and then they can stay up there, and we'll just ask questions at the end, so.
Sounds good. Thank y'all for having us here today. Nick Walker, Park Director. I have Peter Cook with me here as well, in case there are some questions that require more than 13 weeks of experience on the job. And if it gets really tough, it seems like we should tag in Ebenezer. That's, that's, we were just discussing that, and maybe we could just both feign laryngitis.
You are, sir. Because I never met you before.
So before I get into just a quick overview of this, I think there's a little bit of education. A couple of these questions were brought up when we brought this before the executive team.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Your name, please.
My name is Nick Walker, and I'm the Park Director.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize. And so one of the questions that was brought up was around cost recovery or, or county subsidization of Park and Recreation. We currently operate around 21% cost recovery across the department. To put that in context, the national average for Park and Recreation systems is around 28%, and in large park systems, which we are, it's around 24%. So with that in mind, as we talk about equity and equitable, the way we structure our fees around programs is, is still more equitable than I would say most of our counterparts. So today I have five main fee-related areas for your consideration. Over the last couple of decades, we've established fee schedules for our facilities and programs, and some of these fees were appropriate at the time, but they have not been increased on a regular basis, meaning that the, the county subsidization of these programs has outpaced it. Our recommended fee adjustments will bring our agency more in line with local and regional field preparations and rental pricing rates. They, we're on the, our first three areas are on the second year of a two-year fee increase to adjust these fees by 20%. And again, this will bring it more in line with surrounding service providers. Our MECC pass memberships have not been increased in nearly five years, and we continue working towards a regular schedule for those adjustments. And then campground fees have not increased in more than a decade, and these new rates will still be slightly lower than competing campground areas in the, in the, in the vicinity. And then we'll wrap up with revenue projections based upon these fee increases. So the first is natural and synthetic field rates. And again, I won't go through them one by one, you have this in the presentation, but essentially we have looked at a 20% increase. These increases are part of our second year adjustments that we discussed with the board last year, and we're happy to, to kind of go through them. But essentially, it, it aligns with, we're still considerably lower than the market rate on these. There we go. Field preparation fees, and again, for, for a little bit of education on this, these are the preparation rates for practices and games when requested by the customer. And so this is lining and dragging of fields so that they are competition-ready. And again, it's a 20% increase. And then Legion Stadium, these increases are a part of our second year adjustments. This is the last of the three that we discussed with the board last year. Some of these have not been increased since 2004 until they were increased last year. And again, this is the second part of the increase in order to get these in line with the cost of operating that facility. And then the MECC pass itself. MECC pass rates have not been increased in almost five years, and this will keep us competitive with other service providers. And again, if you take a look at the cost versus the benefit of these facilities and what is included with the MECC pass membership, as someone who has a membership at a private facility that I will give up when I, when I move into my, my home here shortly, I can tell you that these are incredibly competitive if you look at the value that residents get for access to these and the number of programs that you get for free once you get inside the building. Campground fee increases have not increased in more than a decade, and many, many of you may not be aware that we have an island, so that one may throw you off when you see that on there. So just as an FYI, it has multiple sites on it, but you do have the ability to rent the entire island. So again, should you want some more education on that, we're happy to tell you all about the wonder that is Copperhead Island, but that is the largest increase, and so we want to do a little bit of education on that. It's a six-tent campsite located on Lake Wiley, an outdoor shelter that accommodate 80 guests, volleyball courts, charcoal grills, horseshoe pit, restroom, shower rooms, and a walking trail, and a fishing pier. So there you go. That's, did not mean to make, be, be a sales pitch on Copperhead Island, but there you go. I should just have Ebenezer do this part. There we go. And so as this, as we project off of these, these fee increases, what it would do to the revenue for the department, these totals estimate a full fiscal year of fee increases, although our contracts generally run six months ahead of time. So entities that have booked athletic space at the sportsplex or on any of our permissible spaces, would, we would honor the prices on those, as we would honor the prices on any of the, the fees that, that we proposed here, with the exception of the MECC pass, which again, the new prices that would go into effect for your monthly fees on July 1. Our intent as a part of this is to have a more comprehensive look at this and fall in line, again, I keep singing Ebenezer's praises, but with a schedule of bringing these to you. It is very difficult when we bring them to you once every 10 years because of how difficult that fee increase, that jump is after 10 years of appreciation. And so next year, we will be bringing to you indoor facilities and pavilions and recreation center meeting rooms. Just again, we will probably be looking at something along the, the lines of the Consumer Price Index or something that is easily tieable to, to allow us to continue to operate them at the level that they, that, that our, our citizens frankly have, have been accustomed to. And then lastly, there is a note that I want to, to talk about, which is Parks and Rec is recommending an adjustment to the nonprofit fee, to the fee reduction that we currently offer. So currently, we offer any 501(c)(3) who turns in notification that, that they are a valid 501(c)(3), a 50% reduction in all fees. Our intent is to continue to honor the partners that we have worked with, who we historically do an entire fee waiver. So that is an agency that comes to us that is wanting to put on a program in one of our facilities, they are wanting to put on an event in a park that is free and open to the public and promotes the mission, vision, and values of Mecklenburg Park and Rec, but at the same time, be more mindful about the impact to the budget of offering a, a, an across-the-board 50% waiver for anyone who, who brings that certification. And so our request is to drop that to a 25%, but to continue to offer that across the board while at the same time leaving the discretion for the Park Director or the County Manager's Office to request that there be a full waiver for historic partners. And so with that, the ubiquitous question slide.
You know, let's go through the other...
Oh, oh, sorry. I bet. So just pretend you didn't see that.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, thank you for this opportunity. As far as Louisa is concerned, we have three divisions that are going to be proposing fee adjustments, air quality, stormwater, and solid waste. As you know, Louisa is primarily a fee-funded operation, and there's only a couple of these that apply across the board, but majority of them would be an individual service-related adjustment. So the first, I want to walk you through air quality. As you know, air quality is a fully delegated program, and last couple of years, we worked with the County Manager's Office, and as presented to you last year, we've come up with a, a, a plan that would do these regular increases based on a C, a rate, a percentage increase that EPA publishes annually. So what we are proposing for next year is the annual fee adjustment based on the CPI that EPA publishes annually for only the permitted facilities. This, this applies to federally regulated Title V permits, and the Air Quality Commission has reviewed this information and recommended approval on March 25th. So what that means is each year, the U.S. EPA publishes a percentage increase or degrees in the minimum fee based on the change in the CPI. This is the, the federal government looking at the... This is the federal government looking at the CPI change and then publishing a rate that is, that each delegated program is allowed to be able to adjust their fees to. The current year's federal fiscal year recommendation is 3.18%. Do you see that over the last five years it's presented to you? So air quality's recommendation is to adjust the fees to increase by 3.18 from this year to the next. And these fees are only paid by the permitted entities. If it's a steel mill or a foundry, only they pay this fee. It's, this is not an across-the-board for other people. And anybody that comes to air quality for the service and a permit are the ones that pay these fees, and these are our recommendations for adjustment. You see the annual emission fee of 65 degrees at the bottom and an annual ambient monitoring fee that is primarily for gasoline stations, right? All the permitted facilities, I'm sorry, is $330. That's the only thing that is being proposed in air quality. Then going to stormwater services, stormwater services primarily deal with two buckets. And so here we have the E-LAP and the goals that are part of that, both flood risk reduction and stream improvement. So these fees help pay for the projects that we do as part of the, both our collaboration with Park and Rec and the city, but also the stream improvement, et cetera. This is the fee that is paid by all residents that have the impervious areas on their properties county-wide. So this fee is based on the financial model that was established with county finance three, four years ago. It is a 15-year model. We are also baked into the model is a $50 million bond sale in FY '26 or early '27. As you know, we have this capital plant of all the miles of stream that is to be restored and the flood mitigation of various properties. We have a capital number that is estimated annually and refined that is plugged into the model and based on the E-LAP goals is adjusted, so we have a goal for the next 15 years. This fee adjustments are also supported by the Stormwater Advisory Committee. As you see, the monthly increase for a Tier One property will be 15 cents on the average. Four will be 65 cents. So although it appears monthly small, but we wanted to make sure you see, these are the fees that are applied to all the properties in Mecklenburg County, depending on how much impervious surface they do have. These other fees are proposed land development user fees. These are the fees charged to developers that come to develop, to have their plans reviewed by us in the towns and in the ETJ. So these are only paid by the developers. And so these are the changes that are recommended based on historical burn rate of how much it's costing us to provide this service. And these have been reviewed and have concurrence even by the town managers as well. As you can see, it's the large subdivision, small subdivision, these are between 10 and 25 acres, and the largest, more than 25 acres of land that may be stripped for development. They are the ones that pay us about $31,300 for their plan review purposes. Sorry, this is for land development and for plan review. These are the fees that are going to be charged, and these adjustments are also minor, but this is what, based on the increased cost by our staff in order to provide these services, these are estimated and have been recommended for approval by the town managers. These are all part of the stormwater land development user fees. And again, I want to highlight, this is only paid for those that apply for a permit. It's not across the board. And these are the permit fees for development in the flood fringes, depending on if the property is going to be, if the development is going to be in the flood plain, because it requires additional work in validating that data and the model, et cetera. So these are the fees that currently are noted in FY '25 and a slight increase. And the last one, minor revision to an existing floodplain permit, the reason you see that significant jump is because the last update was in 2022. And so over a four-year period, the amount of effort and the cost to be able to review that data and the model, et cetera, has increased, so that's the proposed fee. All these have been reviewed and approved by the town managers as well. And lastly, for Louisa, solid waste services. Again, as you know, solid waste is also its own enterprise fund. All of it is funded through fees. We did borrow $45 million in the current fiscal year to continue to pay for the capital projects. As you know, solid waste is a very capital-intensive operation, and so part of this model that we've been with, worked with county finance includes this $45 million and the payback over a period of time. So the proposed fee adjustments incorporate all that. And these fees adjustments have been reviewed by the Waste Management Advisory Board and United of Slay pretty much 18th. And we have multiple capital projects underway that will come online between FY '26 and FY '28. We propose to increase our yard waste fees to $2 a ton. This is again, paid for by those who come across the scale. The yard waste has become a challenge. Some of you may know, historically, we used to lease about 80 acres from the airport on West Boulevard, because the airport is now expanding and redoing a runway. We had to return the property a couple of years ago, but the amount of mulch continues to increase, and it has become a challenge. And so this increased dollars, $2 per ton will help us to contract with a third-party vendor. While we do mulch, while we do sell compost, it's just too much. There is so much yard waste coming into our properties that we would have to have third parties take it off-site for disposal. So this $2 a ton will help us process 60,000 tons of yard waste off-site. This is the fee that we have told the board consistently about $5 per year. This is what is charged to every property in Mecklenburg County. We are requesting an increase of $5, going from $49.50 to $54.50. That'll become part, that's part of the property tax bill. This is the residential availability fee. This is what helps us provide all the recycling centers we have, because there's a lot of infrastructure there and the costs in operating those sites. So that's about 42 cents per month per property. Again, please note, we have a, you know, a 10-year contract with Republic Services for the landfill. That contract ends in FY '28. Right now, it's about $40 a ton, $41 a ton. When it re-ups, we are expecting it to almost double, because the market, we were able to lock in a low rate 10 years ago, you know? But the market is now significantly changed. So this $5 a year, we will try to hold it, but I just want to put it on your radar. In two to three years, it may have to be much higher, just to be able to provide the level of service our community has come to expect. Speedway landfill, this is just to cover our contractual increases. This is 40 to 41.25 a ton. These fees are only paid by the city and the towns that bring us their collective way. So this is not passed on to, you know, the residents. This is the jurisdictions that collect. So if the city of Charlotte, the trash truck that comes on your street, picks it up, takes it to Speedway, they pay us 41.25 based on our contracted contractual agreement with Republic. We will, as noted below, the RFP process will begin FY '26, because we are a couple of years ahead. FY '28 is when the contract expires, we'll begin negotiations for the next 10-year agreement. And these are other, we call them technical fee adjustments, because these are only paid by the users. Construction debris is going to go up from 60 to 62, yard waste from 38 to 40. Since Foxhole is right on the border with South Carolina, we get a lot of people that would like to use our facilities from South Carolina as well as Union County. So we have instituted an annual sticker, because most likely our staff does verify that you live in Mecklenburg County, you use the services for free. But if they're out of county, for an annual sticker is $110. We'll sell them a 55 if they come January or later for half a year. And at the Steel Creek Facility and in our facilities that are going to come onboard, we are building a transfer station component. That fee is going, go up from $15 to $18 a ton. And then the, as I mentioned before, the Speedway landfill fee will be 40 to 41.25, which are primarily paid by the city and the towns. Solid Waste also provides a program for about 70 businesses of collection. This is a very small effort of places where they cannot really find a third-party contractor. That's going to go up from $75 to $100 a month. It is voluntary, and these businesses work with us to help us collect their recycling. So this is an adjustment. And lastly, the state tire reimbursement. As you know, we have the unenviable position of accepting tires from anyone and everyone that just brings it in. The state requires us to accept them, but the amount the state reimburses is always short of what it needs to be. So we, these other fees kind of help subsidize that. And so we think it's about $685, $75,000 in FY '26, just to plug that hole, of what we spend versus what we receive from the state as reimbursement. Those are the three divisions that are proposing fees in Louisa. With that, I'll pass it on to Public Health.
Dr. Washington.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It should be a fairly short presentation. As you all know, in Public Health, we do have a fee schedule for our clinical services. As a reminder, most of our clinical services, we don't actually charge fees. This is really for us to be able to bill insurance if a patient comes to us with insurance. And we do have a sliding scale program for the services that we do have fees for. We don't require payment at the time of service, and if a person cannot pay, we send them a bill, but we don't participate in collection. So just to give you guys a reminder. We do have a couple of medication-related fees that I'm proposing to increase, and a new fee here. One is for a drug called Promethrin. It is, it's a cream that treats scabies. We've been seeing actually an increase in scabies cases in the clinical services space. And right now, if a patient has scabies, they would have to get diagnosed by us, go to a commercial pharmacy and purchase it, and it can cost upwards of $40 to $50. Because we do participate in the federal 340B prescription program, we can get it for anywhere between $10 and $20. That fee does fluctuate. And so to ensure our patients have access to it, we want to actually purchase it and hold it in the pharmacy and be able to sell it to patients directly onsite for whatever our acquisition cost is for the medication. And then secondly, in terms of medication fees, is the Monostat cream that you guys approved for us to also stock last year so that patients wouldn't have to go to commercial pharmacies and purchase it. The 340B price has increased by a dollar, and so we're just increasing our proposed cost to the cost that we pay for the medication itself. A couple of clinical services procedural fees that are mostly dictated to us by other people. The first one here is the intramuscular injection administration fee for the RSV vaccine. This is a new procedure code that was established in 2024, and so we need to add this to our fee schedule so that when we do administer RSV vaccines to children or older adults, we're able to bill Medicaid and Medicare for that administration fee. Again, this is a new CPT code, so just adding it to our Charge Master. And then the next two slides will have a large collection of fees that are fee changes associated with our cooposcopy clinic. These fees are actually set for us by the state breast and cervical cancer screening program. They change every year depending on Medicaid reimbursement rates. And some of the individual fees go up and down depending on the year, usually by very small amounts. And again, no one, patients don't actually pay this amount. This is just what we bill insurance for the various fees, and these fees are set for us by the state breast and cervical cancer program. So all counties charge the same amount for these services that offer them. So that, this slide and the next slide are those sets of fees. I won't go into the details of what each procedure is. And those are our clinical services fees. This last slide is for environmental health, two fees that we don't currently charge that we're asking the board to approve adding. The first one is a special event coordination fee. As you all know, the county has become increasingly the host of a number of types of activities, festivals, large-scale sporting events like the golf tournaments. And so it has become a huge additional responsibility for our environmental health program. Currently, today, we don't charge those coordinators for our services, which involve a series of meetings. It involves onsite support during events to be able to monitor the number of vendors they have onsite delivering food-based services. We do charge the food permit, the food providers, but we don't charge the coordinator a fee. And so these can range in size in terms of the event size. And so our environmental health program has proposed a tiered fee system that based on the number of vendors that would be providing services at an event, we would charge the coordinator a flat fee based on the number of vendors that's being permitted for that event to help us recover some of our cost. So you see those fees are listed there, the largest of those being $3,000 for events with 21 or more vendors. These are really large events like the PGA Golf Tournament, the Wells Fargo Golf Tournament, for example, and also the Taste of Charlotte, for example, where you have all of those vendors in Uptown Charlotte. Again, these fees will be collected by environmental health from the coordinators of those events. The second fee that doesn't exist today is for our mobile food trucks. We have close to 700 mobile food trucks in the county today. A number of them are using commissary kitchens, and this fee essentially would ask for mobile food trucks, would be collected from mobile food trucks if they are changing their commissary kitchen. When they initially apply for a permit, they receive an inspection, an inspection attached to the commissary kitchen, as well as their food truck. And a number of mobile food trucks are kind of hopping between commissary kitchens. Every time they change commissary kitchen, we have to do another inspection with the truck and the kitchen together, because they have separate storage spaces in the commissary kitchens. So this is essentially a fee, a cost recovery for us, having to go out and do additional inspections for those mobile food trucks that are switching commissary kitchens. This is not a fee for their regular inspection, that what happened on the regular cadence as per the state code, this would just be if they're asking us to make a change mid-year or mid-cycle to a different commissary kitchen. And that's it.
All right. I guess we're ready for questions. Now I'm going to start with Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your presentations. I really just have one question. All of these fees, are they helping supplement or are they helping cover the complete cost of everything that being charged for?
I can start for us. None of our fees cover our costs. So either in the clinical services, they certainly don't cover the cost. They help us recover some of the costs where we are able to bill insurance. And same in environmental health, our fees don't cover our cost. Our cost for environmental health services continue to escalate because the community continues to grow. And so our environmental health is mandated, and so the county covers the majority of the cost for the program.
So you, do you budget for that, for that, those extra costs that's not being covered?
It is a part of our annual budget request for environmental health.
Okay. That's probably for each of you, I would think.
Oh, yeah. And so in the case of Park, we range anywhere from, you know, 0% cost recovery on a program to 100%. And so in the case of the increases that we have as it relates to athletic fields, this would help us close the gap between whatever percent is currently being subsidized and getting to that 0%. But in other cases, like the shelters, they're still probably around a 50%. But it does, it does supplement the cost of doing the work there, it just doesn't always cover it 100%.
Commissioner, as far as Louisa goes, stormwater and solid waste, it is, it covers all the cost, because we don't get any property tax money to that. Air quality, there's a small property tax supplement, just because of the nature of work, because we do a lot more beyond what is regulatory. But these fees are anticipated to cover most of the cost of the services we provide in terms of the permitted facilities.
Thank you for all that. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've got, I think, just three questions. For the fees, like for the American Legion and things like that, since we have, we're going to be reducing the waiver, is there kind of like a layaway plan? So for nonprofits that can't actually, you know, pay all that fee upfront, maybe they can, you know, I know you said it was at the discretion of county manager and things like that, but can we offer something to them where they can say, okay, your date for the event is this date, you have until this date to pay the full fee of?
So the way it works with our system, yes, is the short answer. The long answer is, one, remember, we have the capacity to book six months out, and so realistically, we won't be putting these on anyone booking for the next six months until the fees are instituted. But then, two, on top of that, particularly agencies that align with our mission, vision, and values, there's going to, the discretion is going to lean toward being more equitable. It's, this is really for 501(c)(3)'s that are using that to get the discount as opposed to something that is contributing to the county's mission, really.
Okay. Next question, the unincorporated, for Louisa, the unincorporated areas, how do we handle that? Are they charged too, the fees?
Which one, Commissioner?
Or, you know, like for sewage and water waste and things of that nature?
Yeah, it's consistent across the county.
Across the county. So even though they don't, do they get those services? Trash pickup and that kind of thing?
Not, not for the trash pickup. This is, the cities and the, the, the city and the towns do their own pickup. In the unincorporated areas, they ha, they have to contract with their own private provider. But majority of them come to us. We are on the backend helping them process it or send it to the landfill. Or they bring the recycling to us. So what these fees pay for is our backend processing and taking care of all that on the backend, not on the collection side.
Okay. And I'm not even sure that this is a question appropriate for this, but, and if not, then just, we can just move on. This is for Dr. Washington. We got an email earlier about an obligated balance for Brian White's HIV program. Is there a reason that there's an unobligated balance? Was that to us, am I misunderstanding that totally?
I don't know who the email's from or what it's for. So if I were to speculate, though, we, we receive Ryan White funds from HERSA, the federal government. We contract out those services with vendors. There could always be a vendor who doesn't spend down all of their services. For context, Ryan White pays for healthcare services and additional wraparound services for people living with HIV. If there is a provider who doesn't spend all of those funds because people aren't using the services, then of course, there could be a balance, which then would have to be, any obligation of that balance would be up to federal subject to the partners at HERSA to approve any kind of re-obligation of those funds.
I've got, that's, that covers it for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Leek.
Let me first say thank you so much for your information. And I still see if I had had this earlier, it would have been good. But I do appreciate your time and energy. As relates to the Health Department, are we still providing chest X-rays for educators? Do they require that now?
No, ma'am. We only provide chest X-rays for patients who are living with tuberculosis or suspected to have tuberculosis. We don't provide.
I didn't hear.
No, we do not provide any occupational health services for any discipline, teachers, or any other profession. We only provide chest X-rays for people who are either suspected to have tuberculosis or who we know have tuberculosis.
With the chicken pox being so rampant now in other counties, are, how we, in, what, what's Mecklenburg looking like?
Yes, ma'am. We, we have certainly seen an increase in varicella cases among children, particularly children who are not vaccinated for varicella. We continue to, this is not related to my fee presentation, but we do continue to do significant amount of work to try to make sure families are getting their kids vaccinated. Those who choose not to do so, we're working to continue education. But we have seen an uptick in, in vaccine-preventable illnesses more broadly, not just chicken pox, but also whooping cough and other infections among kids because of families who have chosen not to get their children vaccinated.
So we, we don't have that problem in Mecklenburg County yet?
We do, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As relates to Park and Rec, we get a lot of information about the equipment on many of our parks and recs that they're old or dilapidated in certain sections of the city. And the, the question for Nations Ford Road and other communities, where are we with looking at the equipment and seeing if it needs to be replaced or not?
So we're, we're very fortunate in that this county has, as a part of our five-year CIP, each year put in what we call reinvestment dollars. And so our Park and Recreation Operations Team, who go out and do visual inspections, and Bert, who I think has done enough standing for today, but if, if we need to, we'll tag you in. His team as well goes out and does playground inspections and equipment inspections. And so based upon the prioritization of starting with the worst and most unsafe first, each year we spend those funds down in partnership. If it's equipment replacement, we will typically handle that. If it rises to a large enough level, Mark, who has also done quite a bit of standing from AFM, we will partner with them to do that work as well. So it is an ongoing process because we have a large system. But again, I can tell you, we, we start with the worst first and then work toward the best.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's start with Dr. Washington on, on environmental health. The special event coordinator fee, and it says vendors from one to five. Help, help me with that.
Sorry. So let's take, for example, the Wells Fargo Golf Tournament. It happens at a location, and they have multiple food vendors who set up onsite at that location. The law requires that every one of those vendors have what we call the temporary food permit. And so we have to go out with those vendors and issue a permit to each one of those vendors. When you have twenty-five vendors at one site, then we also have to send a team of folks onsite to monitor the food that's being served and, for example, make sure the temperatures are being held. For Wells Fargo, for example, they build all of those buildings for the event, so they're not actual structures that usually exist.
I remember that, but I was just thinking, what about neighborhood events that have a vendor or two? You, you don't talk about those.
No, so most neighborhood events don't qualify as TFEs. The majority of them nowadays, you've used food trucks, which means that they don't have to have a TFE permit. If they have a caterer, for example, they also don't need a TFE for that. So these are where people, individual vendors are preparing food and selling it directly to a consumer.
All right. Ebenezer, for you, on slide twenty-two, you talked about having to borrow fifty million this previous fiscal year and potentially thirty-one million for next fiscal year, twenty-seven?
Yes, Commissioner.
Oh, okay. And the fees will support that also?
Yeah, the financial model will be refined annually.
Okay.
Because right now, we are getting launched on the Material Recovery Facility Recycling Center redesign. It's about twenty-six million. Steel Creek is going to come online about eighteen to twenty million dollars or has gone up a little bit more. And we are also programming some of the tariff-related increases. So right now, this is what we know, but as we go forward, we'll continue to refine annually. And we'll come back to you with a recommendation.
Two short ones before my bell sounds. On twenty-five, what is a residential availability fee? I must have missed that in twenty-two or one year or something.
Twenty-five.
Hold up, hold up, on slide twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
You said maybe a commercial fee.
Correct.
Will be in, it's increased twenty-five dollars now to a hundred.
Yes.
But we may be looking at another increase next year.
We will continue to monitor this on a yearly basis. And let me go back to the, I'll have you ask all your questions so that, you know, before the bell, so I can then answer it for you.
All right, I'm good.
Okay. The residential availability fee, Commissioner, is the fee that is charged to every property in Mecklenburg County for operating the recycling locations. Right now, we have four. So when a resident brings in one TV, it's taken for free. They can bring in oils, dump it for free. So that dollar amount pays for all the free services for residents to come and use our recycling facilities. But if commercial folks come, they pay a gate fee. So that's the difference.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, for Park and Rec, could you guys just help me understand on slide three? So the, the natural grass versus synthetic? Like the synthetic costs so much more, but I would think that the natural grass takes more maintenance. So can you just talk us through what the deal is there?
It, it, to the point that typically the play that we see on synthetic fields is more pay-for-play sports. And so again, that's, and also the upfront cost. So although the operating costs are lower, the upfront capital cost and the replacement cost is significantly more higher.
Got it, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I'm not a fan of synthetic turf, but on cost recovery goals, I'm glad that you were going over them because like nationally, they, they do recommend that we do better in cost recovery. And I just wonder if you would consider increasing the field prep fees because there's such a burden on park ops for that. But everything made sense. I just wondered why the field prep fee, those fees were so low. And then I will go on a field trip with anyone who wants to see Copperhead Island because you guys will love it. On stormwater and air quality fees, I support this, but wonder if they're high enough. Like I always wonder if they're high enough.
Commissioner, like I said, is based on the model. So, you know, we will do it annually. We want to be good stewards, but at the same time, we also want to be sensitive to the customers.
I understand, but I just feel like the future will, the future's going to pay. I love Dr. Washington's new environmental health fees. I think they're really important. And I, I think people take it for granted how much work is done, so I'm glad to see that. And I'm saving my big questions for right now because on the increase in yard waste fees, I'm seeing people burn yard waste, dump it in parks, and do all kinds of crazy with it because they don't want to pay the yard waste fee. And so I, I'm really concerned about the burning, and I'm concerned about the excess mulch. And I know we have a strategy to get rid of some of it, but I think we need to do better because I think a lot of people would take the mulch if they knew it was available.
We are going to, we are, actually, we have enhanced and will continue to do so, Commissioner, getting the word out. With the mulch, it is only the contractors that have to pay the gate fee when they bring in. For a resident, you know, small amounts, they can dump for free. The challenge we have is we really do not know what the contractor-homeowner relationship is in terms of if somebody gets a tree cut in their front yard, you know? It could be that the contractor's charging the owner but not wanting to pay the, the disposal fee, so they dump it somewhere else. We just don't have enough eyes and ears to police it all over the county. But when they come to us, it's only at a certain, you know, on the commercial side is what they pay the gate fee per ton.
Well, if we could do better, like if we can get public information to help with, like how, how do we manage the mulch? Because it's a shame to pay someone to take it when we could give it to our residents for free. And so how do we do better on that without paying someone to take it?
Sure.
And then on state tire reimbursement, like I think the whole board needs to understand how unfair this is. So did you say six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
That's what we are projecting for this FY twenty-six that we will have to subsidize.
And don't we sell the most tires in the state in Mecklenburg?
We don't, we collect the most. I'll have Jeff come, and actually, he has a more up to date. I think it's two tractor trailer loads per, trailer loads per site is what we send out. Jeff.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I think it's been going. I'm Jeff Smithberger, I'm the Director of Solid Waste. Getting back to your questions, we do give our brush mulch away free to anyone in Mecklenburg County and in any other county if they want to. The only thing we're charging for is the select mulch and the colored mulch. We have no problem getting rid of those. Regarding the tires, there is a, a bill in the General Assembly right now that would redistribute the amount of money, but it hasn't passed yet. We're not sure if it will pass, but the six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is going up from the loss that we expected from the last several years. This year will be a slight amount over five hundred thousand dollars. Regarding how many tires that Mecklenburg County sells, we're on par with some of the other larger communities within the state. But many of the other Orange Counties and, and locations that are large are seeing the same numbers that we are.
So give us advice, you know, when we're talking to the state legislators.
Well, it, it would be certainly to, to pass the, the bill that's in front of the legislature right now. It's a Senate bill, it has to go over the crossover. What that would do is redistribute the amount of money that they are getting in. Currently, thirty percent of that money goes directly to the state's general fund. The bill that's in front of them now says that twenty percent of that thirty percent will then be returned back to counties. It's still not going to fix the problem, but it will certainly help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. The first is, I see our lawyer may have stepped out, but I'm wondering, are, what are the legal limits, if you know, Dina, on charging out-of-county residents a higher fee? Because, you know, I know from my long tutelage under Commissioner Powell and all of our Park and Rec public servants that, you know, we just need more money for operations. And I'm not interested at all in, you know, providing a county service to people who aren't helping us with their property tax. So there is a higher fee for non-resident, but, you know, what is the ability for us to charge an even higher rate for non-residents who, again, are not paying for county services with their property taxes?
Well, I don't know exactly. I don't know if any of the departments know, and our attorney stepped out, but I don't know that there's any limit in terms of how much we can charge out-of-state or out-of-county residents to use our services, unless you all do.
I would just offer to explore, maybe that's a way to recoup more money for maintenance because they just are not contributing. And so it's really sort of, our residents are paying more money to use our services because they're paying taxes and they're paying a fee, whereas these non-residents are paying no taxes and they're paying only a slightly higher fee. So I think that could be something worth exploring that I would urge upon the department. Okay. And then, just in the nick of time, Mr. Wade. And, no, I'm joking. And, and then I wanted to also ask our, maybe Louisa, I'm not sure who would be the right person, but like, you know, you're talking about there's so much yard waste that we can't deal with it. And like, for example, if you have, is there anywhere on our websites that would give guidance if you want to have a natural yard that would cut back on the amount of pesticides being used to maintain a yard? And, and, you know, like, I'm currently mowing my, I'm mowing my own leaves with my electric lawnmower, and it, it sort of looks okay, but it kind of looks bad. And I'm just wondering if there is any guidance to give residents on how to have a tidy, attractive, natural yard so that we could reduce the amount of waste that we are trying to dispose of, which it sounds like we don't have enough space to dispose of.
Yes.
Awesome.
We do have quite a bit of information about the fact that we're giving the mulch away. We have recommendations on how folks can use it and how much they should put down. We do have concerns that if somebody wants to mulch-escape their, their large area, the mulch will catch on fire because it's wood and it will burn. So while your idea sounds great, it, it has a practical limitation.
Thank you.
So let me defer some time to Commissioner Powell because I know she had a couple of other questions, so you can hit those.
Well, you surprised me. So you keep, you go first.
Well, go ahead and ask Mr. Wade your, your question to get clarification.
Thank you. I, I was wondering, are you aware of, of any sort of interstate commerce-type prohibition or other reason why we couldn't charge a higher fee for non-residents? Because we are charging more money to non-residents than residents, but I would like to explore yet a higher disparity because non-residents are not paying taxes. And so they're coming in and paying a slightly higher fee, but essentially, when you net it out, residents are paying more to use our resources than non-residents. And so I'd like for us to explore the ability to charge more to non-residents to help fund operations since we're really having trouble maintaining all of our facilities and having enough, you know, resources to do so.
Are you referring particularly to tires? Is that what I?
No, sir. I'm talking about whenever you're renting a county facility, all of our Park and Rec assets, you know, whenever you want to rent, you know, a park, any sort of fees, yeah.
I could look into that, sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell, and just leave me a little bit of runway too, because I do have one thing.
Okay, I'll just be real quick. I, Jeff Smith, we need Jeff Smithberger again to talk about why it's important to increase the rate because of the limited amount of landfill space that we're going to have. And did he leave?
He's right here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because when you're going over the rates, like, it's the same as stormwater and air quality. The fees, you know, they're not that big compared to other urban areas. And so we're not paying very much. And so if, if there's any pushback, like if people are pushing back on why the fees are going up, explain why it's so important that they go up.
Well, I, I believe, you know, in answering your question, that many people don't understand that we operate as a utility. And when they come to our facilities to throw something away, they constantly tell us that I pay my taxes, I shouldn't have to pay this. We explain that we're just like a utility. The more water you use, the more you pay. The more electricity you use, the more you pay. We have a contract with Speedway for disposal of materials now through two thousand and twenty-eight. And so we don't know what our costs will be after two thousand and twenty-eight, but we have a fixed amount that we know what those costs will be. The forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents that we're increasing the fee right now will pay our disposal burden that we have that, that goes off to the Speedway facility. But as Ebenezer had, had said in his discussion, because landfill space is dwindling and because our population is increasing, we have a sort of a diametrically opposing gra- and because our population is increasing, we have a sort of a diametrically opposing graph in the fact that we will have more waste and we will have higher costs and less capacity to, to, to utilize. That's why we're in the process of building multiple transfer stations where we will have the opportunity and option to move materials around our geographical area that we don't have now. We work very closely with David Boyd and his crew and the financial modeling that we do. We model well into 10 years into the future. And so, with, with the budgets that we have, you'll notice that my smiling face keeps coming in front of you every year because we have a rate increase every single fiscal year, and we probably will in FY26, '27, and '28 just because of these reasons. And so, we're set for now, but our future is going to get more expensive. And that's about the easiest summary that I can say.
I appreciate it because I think a lot of times, people don't think about waste management. It's, it disappears and everything's gone. And so, thank you for bringing that to the full board. I appreciate it.
You good, Commissioner?
I'm good, thank you so much.
Fantastic. So, thank you all for the presentation. Just real quick, Nick, with respect to the change or requested change for nonprofits.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little tricky because what I will tell you is that, because I actually had this conversation with our, with our budget director. Because it is a fee waiver as opposed to a fee schedule, it's, it's, it's kind of difficult. And that's honestly part of the reason that, that I've proposed it is that it, I think it was done with the best of intentions, but in many ways, it also kind of usurps y'all.
It does what, I'm sorry?
It, it, it sort of steps around because it says, we say, here's our proposed fee schedule, and then we put in place this system, which, like I said, started off with, with good intentions, but when we have groups renting ballfields and getting a 50% discount when they're charging fees for participation, it doesn't seem in the spirit of it. And so, that's, that's really the driver behind this.
So on something like that, I think that sounds reasonable. What, how it landed on me, let me just, and if you could react to this, I'd appreciate it. How it landed on me, we have nonprofits in the community that want to rent a space. We've always had a 50% discount for those folks for whatever facility. In my mind, most of the time, there's no fees being charged. Are we saying the groups that meet that criteria will, will move to 25%? If they, if they're not a legacy vendor of ours?
No, let me, again, lay it out. So groups can come to us without any explanation of your program or what's going on. If you are a registered 501(c)(3), you will get a 25% discount on pavilion rentals, park rentals, and athletic fields.
But don't you get 50% today?
We give 50% today. But again, there is the avenue for a complete fee waiver, which is the more in the spirit of this, which aligns with groups who are putting on a program who can demonstrate community benefit. And so, and historical users. So that is more in, in the spirit of what you're talking about. Neighborhood associations who are having an event in a park to discuss what's going on, and it's free and open to the public, that's 100% fee waiver. What we are talking about is a fun run in a park where there's a fee being charged and the park is being taken offline and so no one else can use it, applying a 25% discount to assist them in their mission.
Okay. I'm, I'm not completely tracking. I, I would say I like the 50%, how we're doing that. I, I totally understand what you're saying around if someone is charging and they're making a profit from that event, is that, I mean, I, I think that's a, you know, that's shaky ground. I guess what I'd like to take up offline.
Sure.
Is I don't want our nonprofits to be hurt where we've always done, from my perspective, a 50% fee waiver if you're a nonprofit and you're using our facilities. I, I want that process to, my, I would advocate for that process to continue, particularly with our nonprofit. That was just, that would be what I would advocate for, colleagues. But we could talk about, because I don't think I'm clear enough right now to, to give you specific guidance on, on where I'm coming from with that.
The, the one thing I will mention with that, and the, the only thing that gives me heartburn, and then again, happy to discuss this.
Yeah.
Is when you start to get into intent, it becomes difficult to legislate as a, as a county agency. And so, that's really why, from my perspective, a 25% without any sort of justification made it an easier pathway to that than for us to have to go through and look at the structure of each rental. But no, I agree, and I'm happy to discuss offline.
So, so, you know, I, I hear what you're saying and respect it. I think my only pushback would be is that I hear from a lot of groups now that can't even meet the 50%, you know, to cover the other, the 50% cost. So to be able to, to move that to 75% coverage, I think it's going to be an impediment. It'll be, it'll wind up being an equity equation as well because most of the groups that can't reach that are, are these very, very small emerging grassroots nonprofits that I, I think that, that is going to be a, a problem that most commissioners will wind up hearing about. But anyway, we'll, we'll take it up offline. I, I, I hear what you're saying, so.
Thank you, sir.
And everybody else, I'm good with. So thank you, everybody. Why don't we go ahead and move to commissioner reports? We'll start with Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
I have no report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
No report.
Commissioner Powell.
Definitely have a report. So public information has helped. When Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell had a special event about youth, I think it was youth suicide, we were talking at the end of the event about how some of them have died on drug overdoses from opioids and different things that people have left over in their cabinets. And so, I told Rebecca that, you know, and Kay Tembo, you know, we should have something with all these, we have the opioid dollars, like, we should be doing things, take-back events. And so, I talked to Ginny Harper yesterday, and I'll forward this to you, about there's a drug take-back event from DEA on this Saturday. And so, Public Information made a handout and they put it on the Fourth Street poster, the giant poster. So I'm so happy about that, you know, because people need to, like, take, not flush them down the toilet and contaminate the water, but take them to a, a take-back facility. So there's an event on this Saturday, and I'll send that to you. Earlier today, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell and I were in a, a committee meeting with the Secretary of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And I, I'm going to be a bulldog about state oversight and how bad it is for nursing homes and, and memory care facilities. Because if you go there and see what's happening, like, you listen to our advisory board members, and they're crying, like, they're, they're crying, telling us the stories about people can't even call for help because those, the call buttons are on the floor and things like that, and they're understaffed. Anyway, I asked how we can do, how, how can we get better? And he said, well, we're so understaffed. And I thought, that's not an answer, like, we have to, we have to do better. And then I wanted to thank Commissioner Leek for her senior day because it was, it was just awesome. And it was awesome to be there and to see all the seniors and for them to get information. And so, thank you, Commissioner Leek, for, for that and all the people that were involved in coordinating it. It was really nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to acknowledge those in our community who are mourning the passing of the Holy Father, whose spirituality and leadership has guided more than a billion people worldwide and whose passing is an enormous loss for so many of our families, friends, neighbors, colleagues, and church communities here in Mecklenburg County. And thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Don't have a report, but certainly as a result of our conversation and presentations, to remind the public that we are at a little over 1.2 million, and we are growing rapidly each and every day. So we got to find a way to be more effective and more efficient with the tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leek.
Well, I'm just going to say thank you to the staff and to those in the community for supporting District 2 and senior citizens. I always enjoy, excuse me, I always enjoy making preparation for those who sometimes are kicked to the curb, feel that they're not a part of what we're trying to do as a society. So I am humbly grateful for the support and especially to the staff. I could not have done it without the staff and the community and volunteers who came to be a part of it. So again, publicly, I say thank you. The second thing I want to say, whenever we have a meeting, I always make sure that the listing of the second meeting is on the agenda so we're ready for the next affair, which will take place in May, the last of May, for seniors. And I'm just humbly grateful to have that responsibility and to have lived to be a senior myself. I believe we have seniors sitting around this table. Am I right?
You're right.
That I do have seniors that's sitting around.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so thank you so much for living long.
You're welcome. Real quick, as I have, I have a few things. One, I enjoyed Commissioner Leek's town hall as well. She was, those of you that missed it, she danced quite a bit. It was, I didn't know you had moves like that, Commissioner Leek. The second thing I want to do is, even though he left, I want to shout out Jeff Smithberger. He has been providing mulch to some of our grassroots organizations, and his name is just like ringing in the streets, and I, I just, I just love it. And I've been getting selfies with him and, and from different groups and stuff like that, and it's just been great. So I just want him and the team to know how much I appreciate that. The final thing, I'm going to read something. I think most board members, you should have received an invitation for the Carolina Theater grand opening. I hope you, I hope you received that. And so, I, I had a conversation with, with Michael Marsakano, and he is just so appreciative of this board and the board that really invested in it. And so, he sent me just a really nice note, and I wanted to take an opportunity to read it to, to each and every one of you because you're referenced in it. And so, it says, Dear Mark, I remember fondly the very memorable send-off Commissioner Dunlap. You and your colleagues on the board extended me at the county commission meeting when I retired now, two years ago. Time flies, doesn't it? While I didn't get to see the opening of the restored Carolina Theater on my watch, my successor Kathy Passant graciously asked me to chair the grand celebration for the theater on Monday night, May 19th. Each commissioner seated today, and each commissioner seated at the time of the very supportive vote to make a grant to the theater restoration has received an electronic invitation to the celebration. Nevertheless, I wanted to extend a more personal invitation to the board with this note. Would you be willing to read these thoughts to the board at your next meeting as an expression of my gratitude and my hope that they will be able to join us for a fabulous evening of entertainment? My good friend Charles Randolph Wright, who directed the hit Broadway musical Motown, has designed and is directing the show on May 19th. Trust me, it's not to be missed. Some very special guest performers will join us. We're talking Grammy and Academy Award-winning artists coming together in Charlotte for a spectacular show. I can't imagine the evening without you and your colleagues. Begins at 6:00 PM, from 7:30 to 9:00 with dessert and coffee thereafter. If we have not received an electronic invitation, or it didn't come through for any of our colleagues, just let me know, and I'll make sure we get the RSVP out. But that came from Michael. He says, thanks for your thoughtful consideration. See you all on May 19th. Sincerely yours, Michael Marsakano. So I wanted to read that because a lot of times, you know, folks ride off into the sunset and forget about some of the things and decisions that were made, but it was really important. I thought it was nice for him to send that note and to think about us as colleagues and what we've, we're able to contribute to. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, meeting adjourned. Thank you.